We'll get started here and it looks like, is it Scott is up? All, it looks like just about all of the items on the agenda is going to be Scott's.
Good morning, councilmembers. Scott Sanders, Finance Director. I want to bring Jackie up first. We do have three presentations to get through this morning dealing with financials. The first of which is a wrap-up, if you will, for the 2013 fiscal year CAFER and the audit. And so we had McGladrey perform our annual audit and Jackie Dammeyer is here to present, I believe, the first presentation that you have with the blue boxes.
Good morning.
Morning.
So we'll just cover the highlights of this year's annual audit and if you have any questions or wanting additional information on anything, just let me know. We'll go over the required auditor communications to those charged with governance as well as do a high-level summary of the financial performance and then cover the results of our single audit, the compliance section. We were engaged to perform an audit under generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards in the OMB A133 circular. With regards to our audit, we did issue an unmodified or clean audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can give on the financial statements. We did not identify any significant or unusual transactions to bring your attention. We did not encounter any difficulties with management to make you aware of, nor did we have any disagreements around any significant accounting policies or practices being used. There were two new standards that were implemented this year to bring to your attention. GASB 63 was required to be implemented by the city this year, which relates to financial reporting of deferred outflows and inflows of resources. The only change that this had with regards to the financial statements, it changed the statement of net assets to a statement of net position, so it was just a wording change you would have seen, so nothing significant there. The second item that the city was required to implement this year was GASB Statement Number 65, and this was items previously reported as assets and liabilities. This one did have three impacts on the city's financial statements that you would have seen. It now requires bond issuance costs to be written off, so previously bond issuance costs were carried as an asset on the financial statements and then amortized over the life of the debt that it was issued with. GASB 65 changed that and it now requires that those be written off as incurred. So this had about a $3.4 million impact on the city's financial statements because it was required to be written off, as well as it requires two new categories on the financial statements. One is called deferred outflows of resources, which falls right underneath the asset section, and the statement had one item that fell into this category, which was the deferred charge on refunding. So again, it used to all just be buried up in assets. The GASB 65 required it just to be broken out. Nothing new, it's just a separate section, as well as there was a separate category under liabilities now that's called deferred inflows of resources, and that's where the unearned property tax revenue must shift below the line, so it's no longer included in liability. So those are the three main impacts of that GASB that had to be implemented this year. Just to bring that to your attention, if you're reviewing the financial statements, you would have seen that change year-over-year. There is one pending accounting pronouncement to just keep on our radar that relates to GASB 68. That's the big one that's going to be implemented in fiscal year 2015 for the city, and that's the one that relates to the defined pension benefit plans requiring to be recorded as a liability on governmental financial statements. So anything related to like IPRs, that plan will have to be valued and then a liability will have to be presented on the financial statements. So that's sort of the big one hanging out there that everybody has on their radar. But nothing else significant to bring to your attention. There were three audit adjustments made as part of the financial statements this year. One related to a $1.9 million item for a double posting of an entry with the IBNR at the government-wide reconciliation, so it was just taking that amount out. There was a $300,000 item that related to removing a receivable in revenue that had already been received, it just wasn't applied to an account yet. And then there was about a $523,000 item related to truing up capitalized interest. Otherwise, there were no other audit adjustments made to the financial statements as they were presented to us at the start of the audit. In addition, we always have something that's called uncorrected misstatements, and this is something the city hasn't typically had in the past, but it does have this year. These are items that are not reflected in the financial statements because they're deemed insignificant to the financial statement users. And the reason the city had this this year is because technically, remember that GASB Statement 65 I was just talking about, that was for $3.4 million? The accounting standard was written such that it was supposed to be retroactively applied, which would require a restatement of the city's financial statements. Due to the insignificant nature of it at each fund level, it was deemed not necessary to actually go back and restate for that item. So that would be the one item that was carried as sort of an uncorrected adjustment. This has a zero impact on the ending net position, so it just is coming through the current year financial statements instead of being restated, but it has zero impact on ending net position for the city. So just to make you aware of that item. Otherwise, with regards to everything else we had, I'm sure everybody's aware that this was a system implementation year for the city, which from an accounting and auditing standpoint has both complexities associated with it as well as an increased risk associated with an audit, primarily to make sure information that was housed in the old accounting system gets transferred properly over to the new accounting system, which we perform procedures around, as well as just an increased difficulty from the management's perspective of generating the reports they've been able to generate in the past, especially annual reports, they're only generated once a year for an audit purpose. We did shift fieldwork timing back based off discussions with management, wanting to make sure they had enough time to get their information pulled together. And we had no results of any findings that occurred. The information we tested from the old system was properly coming over to the new system, no errors identified, as well as all controls that were in place in the old system appear to be properly working in the new system, which is always a concern everybody has when there's a new system in place, is that controls start to break down, segregation of duties arise or anything like that. We found no issues with regards to our testing and procedures that we performed, so everything went very well in that regard, as well as the reports that were being generated from management's team, they were excellent to work with, they were finding the new reports in the new system. It was a little bit slower this year, but with fieldwork pushing back, they were very much prepared for us when we started the fieldwork, so everything went very, very well. Page three of your packet starts the high-level summary. This is the revenue for all the governmental funds. Just as a reminder, the governmental-type activities are those types of services that are funded through non-exchange transactions, so I always think of this as the collection of a fee, the collection of taxes, the collection of a grant, the collection of a fine versus your enterprise funds that would not be included on this slide, which is more something that operates like a business where the city would provide parking, they would provide housing, they would provide utilities for a fee. So these are the ones that are just the governmental funds that you're seeing here. So as you see along the bottom, taxes, franchise fees, license and permits, those categories there. Just a quick high-level summary, taxes this year were about $145 million compared to $141 million last year, so for about a 4.6% increase or a 3.3% year-over-year change. This is primarily due to the taxable valuation of the property increasing. And as you can see there, if you look at the totals along the top, you can see total revenue from the governmental funds this year was $274 million, so the $145 million that relates to property taxes accounts for about 53% of total revenue at the governmental funds level. So a big chunk of that revenue is all related to taxes. From the total overall perspective, you can see $274 million this year compared to $292 million last year, so about a $17.9 million decrease or a 6% decrease in overall revenue. A big portion of that change comes from, if you look at the last column there, intergovernmental revenues. As you can see, last year was $80.9 million compared to $63.8 million this year, so about a $17.2 million decrease there. This is the category that accounts for the federal and state grants that the city receives that will fluctuate significantly from year-to-year, as you can see. In addition, last year, fiscal year 2012, had an unusual item of about $15 million in revenue in the debt service fund that related to payments from the airport authority on the revenue bonds. That structure, when that broke out, for the airport to be accounted for separately, when they make payments on the bonds, it counts as revenue on the city's books because they have to record it at gross as well as the expense. So last year just had a large $15 million item there. As you can see, some of the other categories fluctuated, just middle amounts, licenses and permits had about a $260,000 increase, fines had about a $385,000 increase, charges for sales went down about $81,000, but no significant changes there. The miscellaneous category, as you can see there, the second-to-last column, was $28.3 million last year compared to $20.9 million this year. Fiscal year 2012 also had an unusual item in that category, which related to a large lease termination fee from UPS that went through, that was the bulk of that change, so another one-time large item in last year's number. Any questions about the revenues there before we flip over and look at the expenses for the governmental funds? Okay. So you can see there along the top again is the total for fiscal year 2013, there was about $340.4 million compared to last year's $362.6 million of expenditures for the governmental funds, so about a $22.2 million decrease in expenditures. Public safety this year had about $99.6 million of expenditures compared to last year's $95, so about a $4.2 million decrease this year. This was primarily due to about a $1.1 million waterfront enlarging development grant that was given in fiscal year 13 that didn't occur last year, as well as about a $900,000 increase in the police and fire retirement benefits, and a $1.9 million increase in expenditures due to storm mitigation recovery. So again, a large portion of the expenditures are going towards public safety, that continues to be an area of focus for the city. Public works this year was about $33.5 million compared to $30.7 million last year, so about a $2.8 million increase or a 9% increase from last year. This is primarily due to the capital projects fund expenditures, having a lot of expenditures that were not capitalizable this year compared to last year, so just a change in that type of activity. Health and social services was about $19.3 million this year compared to $17.4 million last year, so about a $1.9 million increase. This was due to a shift in state-issued funds with regards to an increase in the investor home funds that were accounted for, that accounted for the large increase there. The next category, culture and community, remained fairly flat year-over-year with only about a $20,000 change, as well as the community and economic development didn't have any significant changes, as you can see, fairly flat year-over-year. The third-to-last column there, the general government, as you can see, was about $22.9 million last year compared to $18.1 million this year, so about a $4.8 million decrease or a 21% decrease, primarily due to the capital projects fund having about $5 million more of expenditures last year that were not capitalizable, so again, just a shift in capitalizable expenditures there within the fund. Capital outlay, as you can see, infrastructure continues to be a big focus for the city because if you look at these last two columns, capital outlay and debt service are considerable portions of the expenditures coming through for the general fund, or for the governmental The debt service decreased, as you can see that very last column there, it was $93.1 million last year compared to $71.5 million this year. That significant decrease was primarily due to last year having a large $15 million item related to revenue bonds of the airport. So again, a one-time large item in last year's number that the city did not have this year.
Under public works, do you include engineering with public works? Are they combined on this?
Are engineering included in with public works?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and what's under general government?
General governmental would be sort of where everything else would be housed, that doesn't fall within one of these specific buckets. Would you like to elaborate on the breakout?
Your administrative functions like IT, finance, HR, I believe even legal may be in there as well.
Legal goes in there as well.
Thank you.
With that, I don't want to interrupt, Skip, but...
No, it's all right.
You had mentioned that in that there's a decrease in part because of capitalization of things?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't follow that, I'm sorry.
Sometimes you'll have expenditures that meet the capitalization threshold, so you'll have more items that get capitalized and pushed up through the, an asset that would be tracked on the government-wide financial statements. Other times, they don't meet that threshold, so it's sort of a shift, as well as if there's a focus put on at this level, you'd see if there's just less amounts budgeted for capital expenditures.
Is that like the new enterprise system, or what would have been capitalized?
It's probably best if we actually provide you a list to show you, because there are several items, and we can give you the amounts that make that adjustment, if that's okay.
And our capitalization policy didn't change? It's just the purchase, okay.
Do we have a set, excuse me, a set dollar amount, that anything below that dollar amount goes expense versus capitalized?
Yes.
By thousands?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
Okay.
This next slide is the general fund, fund balance unrestricted portion in days. This is the number of days that the city could pay expenditures if no additional revenue was ever received in. It's sort of a benchmark that the GFOA likes to refer to. As you can see, this year it was 44 days compared to last year's of 40 and the year before of 37, so it's increasingly improving. The GFOA benchmark is 60 days, but again, it's just sort of a nice little look to make sure as things start to fluctuate up and down, what the city would have in unrestricted funds available to pay if all revenue were to stop. So right now it'd be 44 days as of the end of the year.
And the benchmark is 60?
The GFOA benchmark is 60. Typically, I think that's just sort of a gold standard to have sort of two months' worth in there. I think there gets to be concern if you get to be like two weeks, if this would get a lot lower down into the 15, 16-day range, I think that's when people would get nervous that it's getting to be too low, but I see a lot that are in sort of the 45-day range. This slide depicts the enterprise funds, so before we were looking at the governmental activities, sort of the non-transaction-type stuff, this is your enterprise funds. This is the operating income and loss excluding depreciation. So this is highlighting the net revenue, less expenditures before capital and debt service. So as you're seeing on here, this is starting at zero and then showing bars going up or down. Typically, enterprise funds should be self-supporting, so this is a nice little comparison of anything that would go below the line into the red would be the areas that would be something that you'd want to draw your attention to. As you can see there, all of the enterprise funds are showing an operating income before depreciation, except for the municipal housing fund. The municipal housing fund continues to look about the same year-over-year. It will be noted, though, that the main revenue source for the municipal housing fund is their operating grant from HUD, which was approximately $18.7 million in the current year compared to the total expenditures of $21.5. They also receive operating grants of about $1.4 million in services that would also cover this cost, it's just not included in the operating number. So if you were to swoop up the operating grants that they get that are below the line, they sort of are a break-even number as well. So again, everything continued to look very good year-over-year.
Could you talk a little bit more about the golf courses? There's, it looks like there's a change?
Yep, the golf course there is that really small number that was .32 last year, that's compared to .06 this year. So again, it continues to operate at a very small margin of profitability. The numbers within the golf course fund are not overly significant with regards to the totality of the city, so we don't spend a lot of time auditing those numbers. We would be concerned if that started to drop to a negative every year, year-over-year, but from an auditing standpoint, golf courses typically tend to be very close to zero, so that's not abnormal.
But that's better than what it used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It used to be at a loss.
We hope for break-even.
So the last item I just want to touch upon was our compliance reporting that was performed. We did perform an audit in accordance with government auditing standards in the OMB circular A133. With regards to that, we do issue an opinion on internal controls as well as the major program compliance. Both of those opinions were clean, unmodified opinions, so again, the highest level of assurance that the city can receive. We did have to test seven major programs this year that were required under the guidance. All of those had a clean audits associated with them. There was one compliance finding that was noted here. The city submitted a required annual progress report one month after the 90-day deadline. So again, there's lots of requirements that have to meet, this was just one report that was not filed timely and we're required to report that to the OMB.
So was that report, was that actually the city's responsibility, or was it the provider that was providing, that was receiving the funds and it was the city that just ultimately?
It was a city item that should be filed, and it was filed, it just was missed within the one-month period right afterwards. This year, based off of the number of programs that we were required to test, we actually ended up testing 64% of the total federal dollars expended, which is a huge percentage of the federal dollars, with one finding, so another very, very good year under audit. Any additional questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good report.
Excellent.
My name's Rick Clark, I'm the city manager. I'm going to make a few introductory comments today about our budget proposals. We have for you today the recommendation for the city's operating budget, for the capital budget. We've had a chance, I think, to visit with most of you over the last month or so and discuss some of the specifics about the proposal, so hopefully this isn't totally new to you, but it is an important day. We go through this process each and every year about this time and we roll out for you the recommendations. Following the presentation today and your comments and input, we'll schedule some town hall meetings the first week of February. I think Scott Sanders will talk about that in just a bit. I'm just going to make a few introductory comments here, sort of the things that have led up to where we are with our budget, and then Scott's going to talk about the detailed recommendations. So again, we have a two-year budget plan, as we've done in the past. This particular slide you've seen before, on the far-left side is the general road use tax. That's the budget we're going to be talking about today, mostly $172 million, but you see the city's total budget, about $535 million. We've talked about some of these other budget components in prior workshops, so we're going to focus today on the general in-road use tax as well as the capital budget. You're mostly familiar with the actions that the council's taken in the past over the last eight years or so. These actions have almost always been difficult to do, and there's almost always some pain associated with these things, but the list here is general, but we wanted to give you a general sense of the kind of things that we've done. Privatization initiatives, partnership plans, cooperative agreements with employee groups. By the way, our city unions have done just a great job working with us, and as you know, each and every year we've come back when we've done union negotiations and we've made proposals, and I think in virtually every instance, we've achieved some very good results working with our union leaders in the city on behalf of our employees. We've reduced staffing all across the organization, and then of course, when the council decided to go self-insured on our insurance, it is saving us a good deal of money. These actions have been very effective, if not always easy. You've cut about $28 million out of your general fund budget. There's been over 300 positions that have been eliminated from the system. Again, there's some pain associated with this, but the effects of this have been profound in terms of your ability to manage the budget. And last, but not least, the property tax rate today is lower than it was 10 years ago, so that's an amazing accomplishment to get all of those reductions done. The council has made a commitment that our process be very transparent and open to the public. I think we've done that. It is difficult, but by virtue of the presentations we've done at workshops and the town hall meetings that we've conducted, and just our overall approach to making our information available to everybody makes the process very open and transparent. It's interesting to me that through the period of making all these cuts, we have had this remarkable period in our history as a city of just receiving a huge number of accolades. I think in the last three or four years, it's been over 50 at last count. If you count up all the different accolades and recognitions that have come our way, it is just a remarkable period. We have a list here of some of the publications and institutions that have made those ratings. There's way too many to list, but a few of the ones that really stick out to me, best city to raise a family, best city for business and career, best place for family, best city for young professionals, and the list goes on. There was the one last week on the Today Show, which was, in some respects, the most remarkable. But it's also, I think, good to point out that it's not just the publications from outside the city, the national publications, which is wonderful and feels really good, but it's our own citizens that give the city high marks. In the citizen survey that was just conducted this last fall, 81% of the citizens of Des Moines said that they are satisfied with the quality of life in our city, and that's, I think, given all of the cuts and the effects of the recession that we've gone through, quite an remarkable accomplishment. And also through that period, a huge number of improvements in terms of our capital investments, and then also dealing with major, major natural events, the floods that have occurred here and major snows, all have been dealt with, I think, in a very good fashion. And at the bottom of the list there, we've received 36 consecutive GFOA, Government Finance Officer Association Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is something we don't talk about a lot, but is quite a remarkable thing. So before I turn it over to Scott, I wanted to talk about some of the guiding principles that we've gleaned from you in our discussions over the last year or two and in prior budgets. These guiding principles in a lot of respects have been the key elements that we've tried to reflect in the recommended budget coming forward. I want to just touch on some of these. First of all, no reductions in police or fire sworn strengths, so our commitment going into this budget, we've made cuts in those areas in the past. We thought it was very important to maintain the strength of sworn officers in both police and fire. There are no layoffs planned for fiscal '15. Now, there are some vacant positions that we're going to recommend be eliminated, but there's no actual layoffs of personnel. In past years, we've done that. In this particular budget cycle, we're not recommending any layoffs. We've tried very hard to avoid reductions or impacts on critical services. That should be also noted, however, that there are impacts within the organization, our ability to perform, particularly when you look at some of the back-office functions, those are much skinnier today, if you will, than they've been in the past, but in terms of our ability to actually deliver services to our residents, we've worked really hard to minimize impacts in those areas. Public input has been, as I mentioned a moment ago, a keystone to our process. We're again recommending some town hall meetings, which will take place in the next couple of weeks. Service impacts must be explained, seems like sort of a minor point, but the fact is, as you go through this process and you cut $28 million out of your budget and you reduce the number of employees that we've had, there are clearly some impacts and some aspects of what we do, and we think it's important for us to be clear and transparent with the public as we go through that process. New revenues must be certain and ongoing. Another way to say that is that we don't use one-time revenues to balance the budget, so that's been a guiding principle frankly, as long as I've been city manager, and it's again, the case in this particular budget. Last, but not least, no increase in the tax rate is being recommended in our budget today. The only exception to that would be if the franchise fee revenue referendum, which is coming up in the first part of March, is not approved, then the recommendation would be to increase the tax rate by 41 cents. So that decision would not be made by the council according to our current schedule until you actually approve the budget on March 10th, at which time you would know what the results of the referendum were. So with that, Mayor and Council, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Sanders. Scott is going to kind of walk through the more detailed recommendations on the operating budget side of the... We've tried very hard to avoid reductions or impacts on critical services. That should be also noted, however, that there are impacts within the organization, our ability to perform, particularly when you look at some of the back office functions. Those are much skinnier today, if you will, than they've been in the past. But in terms of our ability to actually deliver services to our residents, we've worked really hard to minimize impacts in those areas. Public input has been, as I mentioned a moment ago, a keystone to our process. We're, again, recommending some town hall meetings, which will take place in the next couple of weeks. Service impacts must be explained. Seems like sort of a minor point, but the fact is, as you go through this process and you cut $28 million out of your budget and you reduce the number of employees that we've had, there are clearly some impacts in some aspects of what we do, and we think it's important for us to be clear and transparent with the public as we go through that process. New revenues must be certain and ongoing. Another way to say that is that we don't use one-time revenues to balance the budget. So, that's been a guiding principle, frankly, as long as I've been city manager, and it's, again, the case in this particular budget. Last, but not least, no increase in the tax rate is being recommended in our budget today. The only exception to that would be if the franchise fee revenue referendum, which is coming up in the first part of March, is not approved, then the recommendation would be to increase the tax rate by .41 cents. So, that decision would not be made by the council according to our current schedule until you actually approve the budget on March 10th, at which time you would know what the results of the referendum were. So, with that, Mayor and Council, I'm going to turn it over to Scott. Sanders, Scott is going to kind of walk through the more detailed recommendations on the operating budget side of the ledger, and then we're going to talk a little bit about the capital budget as well. Any questions for me before I step down?
Good morning again. Okay, so I'm going to dive into the 2015 numbers behind the budget. So, what we have is a status quo. If there were no changes to be made, the gap would stand at $1.6 million. There's 175 million in revenues with 176 decimal eight million in expenses. So, the challenge ahead of us was to resolve the $1.6 million gap in fiscal year '15. So, how do we go about that? First off, nearly $700,000 in savings were found with eliminating vacant positions. These were reviewed one by one as they became vacant by the Position Review Committee. And in that determination and discussions with the city manager's office, these 10 positions are going to be eliminated. Again, they were vacant, so these are not layoffs. We've shown you which divisions within which departments those are identified. And then, lastly, again, the intent was to minimize the impact on essential services, but clearly, operationally, there are impacts that have to be resolved within the departments. Another proposal is to reallocate gaming funds from street maintenance to street debt. So, essentially, $1 million of gaming funds of the nearly $6 million that we receive every year would be reallocated to pay debt service on street projects. That allows the debt service fund to be reduced by 13 and 1/2 cents, and then we would raise the operating levy the same amount, 13 and 1/2 cents, such that the total tax rate for the city would not change. And that then allows for additional funds in the operating. The street projects, to give you a little bit of comfort, and in conversations, I understand the mayor and a couple of council members are concerned about the shift of this gaming. We need to do an annual, the staff will do an annual review of total street investments. As you might imagine, we have a lot of different sources that we use for streets, road use, this gaming funds, and CIP bonds. And then, we also have federal funds as well that we're able to receive for street projects. To that note, the fiscal year '15 total street investment is $41 million, and that's a $2 million increase still from prior year. 60% of the city's CIP is dedicated to streets, so we keep that as a focal point. But, again, we'll review this every year and we'll look at it from a comprehensive view of all sources coming in and the total expenses dedicated to streets. Obviously, there's initiatives up at the state that we'll monitor as well. Any increase to road use tax would help this area significantly. Another source of revenue the city has is the automated traffic enforcement. This is the ATE or red light camera program. I want to show you transparency where all the figures are. These are shared with the media on a regular basis as well. The total gross revenue is 2.9 million anticipated for next year. The cost of running the program is shared between GATSO, the vendor, and city staff. Most of the back room processing with the software, the hardware being provided, is all coming from GATSO. And then, they also do the billing for the first 90 days. And so, then the city takes over at that point. Obviously, city police department is involved in the final step of certifying that it is a violation, and even some of finance staff is involved then in the collections after they turn the accounts over to us. So, it's about one point, about half of the annual revenue is spent just maintaining the program. But that does allow 1.4 million to go towards city operations, which we've identified for public safety needs. The three items in the bottom, the school resource or the SRO program, there is a city cost to that program, and so we're using the ATE funds to pay for that, a little over half a million. You've heard about the police cops grant opportunity to keep our strength where it is today. That is associated with nine officers. The cost that the city needs to bear on that annually is a little over $650,000. And then, lastly, about $200,000 for other, as needed, public safety needs. Very successful burglary detail was assigned with the ATE funds last year, and it's anticipated that those type of needs would continue and be available with these funds.
Scott, what's the term of the GATSO contract right now?
I believe here, within the year, we'll be doing annual reviews, so we can review it now annually. The extensions may go another three years. I'd have to check on that. But, again, you're going to have an opportunity and a decision here within the year to renew. Other fees and revenue sources, so these are non-taxes. The library is looking at the opportunity to rent out the downtown facility for your for-profit-based entities that want to use those spaces. We have a street excavation fee that was a flat fee that was recommended that we, it varied quite a bit on how much work needed to be put into a street excavation. As you might imagine, some are very small, some are quite large. The decision and recommendation is to move to a sliding scale type of fee, depending on how much actual time and energy resources are put into each excavation. That actually generates more revenue than when it's done that way. Park fees are looking at opportunities in the cemetery operations to generate more fees, as well as some changes and even some income coming off of the hub down here off the principal riverwalk. Fire inspection fees, similar to the street excavation, there was a flat fee for inspections, and, again, the effort of work differed from one project to the next, and so this will move to more of an actual time and resources spent, sliding scale. And, again, it also would then generate more revenues than it does today with the flat rate. We're also going to look at credit card fees, excuse me, when fees owed to the city are paid with a credit card. We do that currently on a couple of items, but not all. Realize we need to get consistent with how we charge that, so where that's available, we will charge the credit card fee. We also are able to get comfortable with a higher collections rate for the parking tickets that are owed to the city because of the vehicle registration hold at the county level, and that is Polk County only at this point, and it's only for parking tickets at this point. But we do believe that there's an opportunity to expand that program into other funds that are owed to the city, and so that could greatly increase our collection rate on funds that are already owed to the city due to fines and fees and whatnot.
And that's a new program this year?
Actually, it was just implemented a harsh part of last year, and so we have, we wanted to wait to see how successful that was really going to be, and it's been greatly successful on the parking tickets. Other actions that we can't lose track of, I've mentioned this, in order to maintain the sworn strength at the police department, we needed to find funding for nine officers that were going off of an old 2009 cops grant. And we were able to, the police department was able to receive another grant for nine officers, and $375,000 a year will come from federal funds, very helpful, for three years. We do need to maintain those nine officers in the fourth year at the city's cost, so what we will do is we will put aside $657,000 a year out of city funds, use some of those in the current year for the current expenses, and hold over a little bit so that the fourth year is not a full surprise cost to the city. We'll have funds already set aside as needed. Lastly, there is a loss of revenue due to some of the communities pulling out of the homeland security. That's another discussion that you've had before. So, when all those actions are put together for the 2015, what you'll see in that middle column here is that we would now have a balanced budget, and, in fact, there would be a small surplus of less than half of 1%, however. And so, the council action on March 10th will be twofold. We need to do some very minor tweaking of the current '14 budget. That's listed here as amended 2014 in the first column, and then we will have this recommended budget with any changes that you may have for '15. But we like to do a two-year budget, and it's been very successful as a city in the past, so we want to look out to 2016 as well in that second year. Nothing formal has to be approved for 2016, but it's always a good idea to have that second year understood. And so, when we take all these actions that are being recommended to you in '15 and assume they're still there in '16, the gap that still remains and needs to be resolved for '16 is a little over $2 million. And so, that's where staff will be working on the next 12 months, essentially, to resolve. Now, there are quite a few options that we're going to be looking at in addition to what is being proposed. There's an opportunity to look at leasing with a maintenance agreement on our white fleet. These are passenger vehicles and are smaller trucks. The Personnel Review Committee is continuing to look at every vacancy that comes across this city. We're going to expand that effort to also look at organizational changes and opportunities, department by department, so we're going to dive a little deeper into those opportunities. We're looking at tax abatement. There was a significant change last year up at the legislature in that apartment buildings will now phase into a residential rollback over the next eight years. So, the question that gets posed is, do they need 100% abatement in the first few years if they are going to get to a, essentially, half the taxes they were paid before with the rollback? So, we'll do an exhaustive review of that and present that as an option to the council in the next few months. Recognize that on your council agenda for tonight, there's an agreement with the FDA, and so there's an opportunity there to possibly lower the DART levy for Des Moines residents with the funds that we give to them from the park and ride. And if that is the case, we could let you know what that lowering of the rate would be. It is outside of the city's rate, but it affects the same Des Moines residents that your taxes do. Just something to keep track of. We're looking at an opportunity to redirect some of the hotel-motel allocation to offset city functions that we have today, dealing with attractions and street use events that obviously benefit not only the city, but the other organizations that receive hotel-motel funds. And then, lastly, debt restructuring. You'll have to think back a few months. I talked to you about a situation that we're in right now with a very steep yield curve where interest rates on the 15-year to 20-year are very high compared to our short-term debt issuance. And so, you're going to see a different structure of debt, shorter, to take advantage of the lower interest rates on the short end, but with the need to then refinance in the 10th year, if you will, the remaining debt. Again, then, anticipated to be lower rates for the short term. And so, that analysis will come back to you before we issue the next set of bonds as well.
Scott, could you go back and repeat the comment you made about hotel-motel?
Right. And so, this is just something we're looking into. Hotel-motel taxes, the revenues, have increased dramatically the last five years in a row, actually. We've seen a dramatic increase in that. And so, the idea there is to look at where are their city costs associated with shared benefit with other groups that receive the hotel-motel tax and see if there's an option.
Like Bravo and CVB, those are the two?
Those are the two.
Right, that over half of the hotel-motel tax goes to those organizations that's received. So, it's just, at this point, looking at that, knowing that that area is well taken care of with the growth the last several years in hotel-motel taxes.
I'm just trying to think through, then, let's just take Bravo, for example, because of all, they fund festivals.
Right.
So, maybe the issue would be, or they fund a lot of the downtown events, so then look at having a related cost for street closures and that would go directly to the city.
Correct. And even the coordinating of the events that the city manager's office takes care of, things of that as well. It's pretty easy to show that there's a shared benefit in
I understand, I just
Current costs that the city incurs completely.
This is, you know, from a CVB standpoint, and I don't think Bravo is any different, some different events, but, you know, you look at last summer when we had kind of an extraordinary bump in really great activities downtown. Ragbri came downtown. We had the golf tournament at Wakanda, other things. That created far more expenses for the city beyond the hourly wages of our overtime police officers that we've kind of always incurred and asked those events to pay for, but that coordination has become very expensive for the city, and I think it's worth talking to those two organizations about how to use this escalating source of revenue. It's increasing much faster than our taxes or other areas of revenue. Just one other thing on this point. There are different ways to approach this. One is through a more elaborate approach where you would actually seek to amend the 28E agreement that we have with these organizations. I'm not sure that's really what you want to do here. This approach that Chris Coleman just talked about, where you might work with CVB and see if they could fund some of these activities that we have, makes a lot more sense. It's not as elaborate. It's easier to do, and it does recognize the fact that the cost of a lot of these major events is borne disproportionately by the city of Des Moines. A lot of them are right here, so we do incur a lot of cost in furthering their objectives, and so it seems like a discussion we ought to pursue. And essentially, that's what's being said here. There's no definitive recommendation at this point, but it is something that clearly needs to be examined.
Well, in an amendment to the 28E agreement, Bravo, for example, would require all communities to have to
That's why we wouldn't do it.
And that's why I'm saying that is not necessarily the first
And Bravo was tough enough. CVB is even tougher because that agreement was passed through a referendum of the citizens, and that's how we would have to go amend that. You know, we'd have to have a referendum to amend that. I think the other thing to say, just so nobody gets, you know, Scott's laying out six or eight bullet points as a way to look at $2 million. This isn't, you know, a huge chunk of that $2 million gap, but it's a way to kind of nibble around the edges and create a little bit more fairness as we're trying to close the budget gap.
Okay, thank you.
And then, a couple of other items, obviously, that we'll continue to look at, where we'll be finishing up Municipal Service Center Phase 1 and getting most of the Parks Department relocated to that new facility. And so, the hope there is to look at opportunities as we combine those field operations, if you will, to find some more efficiencies that would come from the proximity of where they are officed. Also, looking at a $200,000 study on the space utilization, if you will, of the offices downtown here with City Hall, the Armory, and the police station. Old structures that are not set up for modern-day office needs, and so I think there's a real opportunity here to look long range, understanding how we might be better able to serve the public and maybe changing up how our facilities are actually located. It also helps in the sense that with all the redevelopment going on in East Village, that we understand what our own needs are in this area with parking and whatnot. So, that's a long-term goal there. Well, clearly, over time, you've heard about different influences on our budget that we had little or no control of, and that continues. None of these should be new to you, but it does look a little daunting when you put these all on one list. Last year, the state enacted a commercial rollback with some provisions for backfill. You'll hear more about that over the next two or three years. The residential, the growth in the rollback was limited to 3% instead of the 4% before. That had a huge impact on our budget. Valuation disputes continue. There's opportunities to dispute at the county, the state, and the court system at this point, and so there are quite a few opportunities for the valuations to be lowered, and that does continue to occur. And that's difficult to project, as you might imagine, as well. The state pension funds, the 411, which is for police and fire, we'll have a few decisions to make this summer and fall. to make this summer and fall that may impact positively the contribution rates that all the 411 cities need to pay for that contribution rate. So hopefully, there'll be some positive news there later this summer and fall. Ipers, again, controlled by the state, need to continue to monitor what their contribution rate would be as well, anticipating that there may still need to be some small increases there as well. Federal funding, again, CDBGs and CSBG, those funding completely controlled by the federal government. We have unfunded mandates, quite a few others even, but what we put on here was a reminder that 1.5 million of annual capital is put into curb cuts for the sidewalk repairs that need to be done for ADA compliance. There's discussion going on still with federal agencies about whether that may need to be increased further yet. EPA and DNR continue to have quite a few mandates and requirements that our sewer utilities need to live up to as well.
Scott, before you move forward, would you clarify that first point there, the state commercial rollback and residential value limitation? That's only on the increase side, is it not? If we saw what we did in a couple of the years from 2008 to 2010, significant decreases, there's no floor on the decreases, is there?
That's correct. The valuations are free to be lowered, so to speak, through these processes with no limitation on how quickly they could lower. But there are limitations on how quickly they're allowed to grow.
So just as an example, if they went down 10% in one valuation period to the next, we could only gain that back over three-plus valuation times?
That's exactly correct. On the same existing property, you would not be able to gain any faster. And we actually saw that occur with the 28% drop in office valuations downtown between 2009 and 2011. And so that will take a dozen years potentially to recover from through natural appreciation. And that's where the focus at the state is that you either have to bring in a lot of new construction, or you're not going to be able to maintain your existing revenues. And so that's the challenge that Des Moines will have and continues to have.
So for some, it's continued sprawl, right?
Well, hopefully, it's smart growth.
Thank you, sir.
I did actually itemize for you what monetarily these cuts have been to the city due to these state actions. You'll see some of these are rather old, but some of them are newer. $3 million in machinery and equipment, you've probably recall that one was a significant cut. And then there was a time prior to 2004 when there was actually a state payment that was coming to the cities because of other credits that they had gotten rid of that the cities would have received. And they said, well, let's just lump those together and call that a contribution to the city. And that's what you're seeing with the population allocation of 2.2 million. And then just a few years after they aggregated that payment, they completely got rid of that payment. And so the city lost 2.2 million of annual ongoing revenues, which in $2,004, you can imagine would be worth a lot more to us today had that still been left alone. And the reason I bring that one up is because the commercial rollback will now have an element of backfill associated with it to the city. And very similarly, now you're going to see a direct payment in 15, a payment from the state to the cities associated with the commercial rollback. And so the question will be, how do we project and expect whether or not those revenues will be there long-term? That's something the Finance Department's going to have to come to you with recommendations on how to handle that risk, if you will, that that could be taken away very easily.
So you have questionable, it's questionable whether or not the state will, in the long term, actually backfill that? Is that what you're saying?
Well, Mayor, similar to investing, I can't tell you that past history will give you any indication of what happens in the future, but the state is batting 1,000 in removing all fees that they have in the past given to cities.
But wasn't there language in the bill that finally was signed by the governor that addressed that?
In terms of that, as much as they could, because they can't bind future.
Which is different, though, from previous.
Some of these, some of these actually were similar fashion in that there was a standing appropriation. And so what that means is, if they do have no actions to pull back those funding, it's already in their state budget year to year. And so it would take a proactive vote of the legislature to take it out. But again, some of these others in the past were set up in a similar fashion and then taken away. Essentially, they can't bind future legislature. So without making it a constitutional revenue, which is how our road use tax, that's the only source we get that's constitutionally protected, unless they were to go that route, it's always subject to being removed in the next legislature. And I do want to point out that the residential rollback, that's the new item, $650,000 of the resolve that we had to find in this fiscal year 15 budget can be tied directly to that legislative change last year. That's just the residential piece. And so that number will double next year, and then another six, every year, 650,000 roughly is added to that challenge. And so as much as we tried to say that this is a significant impact, that was still a change that they made.
Just a point on that, it was the commercial rollback.
That was backfilled?
Correct.
This, when you refer to it as residential rollback, I think you're referring to the apartments that were where the valuations have been reduced over a 10-year period?
This is actually the change from 4% to 3%.
Okay.
In a residential rollback. So the rollback, the residential rollback, was not allowed to rise as it would have in previous.
But some of the cuts were backfilled, and some of them weren't.
Correct.
And so we don't have that protection, even if it is appropriated.
Also, what we have is an opportunity now to start to implement the Tomorrow Plan and the Capital Crossroads. The elements we have here start to address those goals. Comprehensive plan and zoning code update is part of the proposed CIP that you have in front of you. The abandoned and blighted property removal program, looking at taking some opportunity to remove blighted property with some funds in the CIP as well. We're looking at a homeless coordinator position being created through block grant funding, and hopefully, if there's an opportunity, get some shared funding from the nonprofits as well on that. And then lastly, with our neighborhood development, excuse me, neighborhood delivery system that we have for services, looking to tie those opportunities with the initiatives of the Tomorrow Plan and the Capital Crossroads to get those objectives out into the neighborhoods.
Scott, let me just highlight a couple things on here. First, Skip Moore and Christine Hensley were both on the Capital Crossroads Neighborhood Planning Committee. Both of you have talked to me about the need to see if we can begin some implementation actions, so we've tried to address it here. A couple of the items on here, actually, all of these relate to that in some fashion. So there's obviously more work to do in terms of implementing that plan, but we wanted to show a commitment to it, at least in a very initial way, and some of the items on this list do. Item two, the very first thing on this list, comprehensive plan and zoning code update. This is an issue that Mayor County has talked to me about, well, Mayor, I think it's been more than a year or two, about our need to see if we can get the comprehensive plan updated and the zoning code updated. I know there's been lots of work done on that in the past. We've just not gotten it over the finish line. So this item would represent a commitment to move that forward over the next couple or three years. There's a lot more detail in terms of how that would be done that Phil Delafield and Mike Ludwig have put together and working with Larry Hulse, and we'd be happy to provide that detail as well. And last but not least, the last item on that list, MBSD, is an existing program. It's been particularly effective. This council has been very supportive of MBSD. Our staff has been very positive about its effectiveness in the neighborhoods, and neighbors seem to like the program. There is an opportunity here to fund that program on an increased level with some private dollars. We're going to try to pursue it. We wanted to reflect it here, just so you knew, that particular work was going forward. And last but not least, homeless coordinator position is an initiative that comes about through the HCC, Homeless Coordinating Council. Chris Coleman chairs that. Mayor County, Christine Hensley are both members of that board as well, as well as others. This would be a position that would be funded with block grant dollars, CDBG dollars, and hopefully, some nonprofit or private funding that would be added to that as well. So these are all important initiatives that have come out of some recent planning efforts, so.
Mayor, manager, if I can, I think I know the answer to this, but I'd like you just to speak to it for a minute. Over the last couple of months, I've been, and I think others have been, concerned about the growing concentration of low-income tax credit properties and assisted living facilities. We've talked about that. I think your recommendation has been that that should be a zoning matter and kind of identified through the comp plan. Can you talk about that with relationship to the first bullet? I want to make sure we're not losing that.
Yeah. Mr. Coleman, I wish we had added the word, the Affordable Housing Plan, on here as well. But our intention is to address the directive from this council to look at affordable housing planning for Des Moines, and frankly, the metro area, as part of that comprehensive plan update. The staff has looked at that requirement that council has set out, and we think the best way to approach that is in the context of the comprehensive planning process, where you can establish guidelines and approaches to it that address it more effectively than we can. If we look at it, it's just an isolated event. So our recommendation is that as part of the comprehensive planning and zoning code update process, we would look at the Affordable Housing Plan initiative that you've referred back to us, and it would be picked up as part of that process, and I think could be dealt with much more effectively in that context.
Thank you.
And can I just add on the second bullet, abandoned and blighted property removal program? There still is the issue with foreclosed properties?
Yes.
And I know we've had the committee, but the committee has not met, and there are some problems throughout the city, more so than other parts of the city.
Ms. Hensley, I think that's true, and I could ask Phil or staff to embellish on it. We'd be happy to get you more information. I think our thought is that the abandoned and blighted property removal program isn't necessarily a byproduct of foreclosure process, but as foreclosures have tended to reduce, we think the real apparent problem that's coming out is more with the abandoned and blighted property thing. So this is an evolution of discussion around foreclosed properties. It's not exactly the same thing, but we think this particular initiative of looking at abandoned and blighted properties is a way to get at what we think people are most concerned about with is the property, the one or two houses on a block that look really bad, that are not well-maintained. And this is a more targeted approach at getting with that, as opposed to what had been thought about initially as a more directed approach at foreclosures, per se. So I'm looking at Laura or Phil, either of you want to embellish on what I said, you're free to.
Christina, I think that in part, we also have a sort of a cross discussion going on with the historic properties as well in that task force, because I would guess the majority of these properties fit into that 50-plus-year and older category.
So just as a recap, the talking point now for expense reductions is about $29 million with these recommendations, has been cut from an annual budget last eight cycles. 323 full-time positions removed from city staffing, but have maintained wherever possible the essential public safety services in the 2015 budget. No changes to the public safety numbers. Budget recuts, or excuse me, further budget reductions, obviously, will impact city operations, looking at fewer and fewer opportunities to have overlapping responsibilities. The idea is that we would maintain strength for the normal day-to-day expected services provided to the public, but where we are at risk is when there's that unusual surge of need for service in that we don't have, we're not staffed for surges, if you will, for the non-public safety aspects of city government. And so those are continuing to receive a brunt of the cuts, if you will. Now, the tax rate. So again, the 15 recommended tax rate would be unchanged as long as there is a franchise fee referendum positive response, so that that revenue can be used to pay the debt service. So if that were to fail on March 4, the budget would include a 41-cent rate increase to the tax rate. So that sums up the elements of the budget. Before I move on to the capital, one more opportunity, because Finance Department will need to put together the recommended budget book, so that you can have all the detail with these recommendations included in the blue book, the budget book that we give to you each year. And so that, we need to get started on producing that. So unless there are any other questions, I'll move on to capital, and we'll get these documents produced for you.
I guess, Scott, is this the presentation when we do the town hall meetings, will this be the same presentation that will be presented?
It's not, it won't be identical to this, but it'll be very close.
Okay.
And obviously, we're doing it here today to get your input and suggestions, so any suggestions you have along those lines would be appreciated.
Okay.
Okay, so our capital budget handout was given to you. I'm only going to go through about half these slides. The rest of it is for your reading material, that you can understand more detail, dive deeper just into the areas that you're interested in. But I'll cover all the highlights, all the changes, if you will, and the significant items in the capital. Similar to our operating budget, we, every year, the council needs to approve the next year's capital budget. And then the remaining five years in the plan is simply that. It's a plan that you will come back and then actually approve each given year, one at a time. There are tax-supported projects with the GO bonds that get issued. There are TIF projects that you'll see in this listing. The TIF projects are actually itemized at the back, but this does not include all the items of the sewer and stormwater, which we've addressed in an earlier workshop. There are kinds of funding sources as well that you'll see in here for these projects. We have also a similar guiding principles for the capital, looking to maintain infrastructure, especially where it pertains to public safety and health needs. We obviously seek out grant funds and other sources of funding that may be available. We make sure we fulfill any commitments we have with other organizations as it relates to capital. There is a TIF policy that we adhere to, roughly a 75% use of TIF citywide. We obviously monitor the Citizen Satisfaction Survey, which tells us that we need to continue to have a focus on streets. So that will be reviewed each year as well. Obviously, there's a preference when we do have identified projects that have other funding identified for it. If we need to have a city match, we give that a preference if there's other funding for a project that the city has already identified. And then there's debt management policies that we make sure we adhere to as well. With the gaming fund change, the debt service rate is looked at to try and maintain that at about a $4 rate. And so we'll adhere to that with this policy or with these programs as well. I'm going to start at the highest level and show you by fiscal year, by category. So we have bridges, we have fire, library, municipal buildings, parks, streets, and miscellaneous. And it's pretty clear to see here at the bottom that the streets do get a majority of the money. The pie graph shows that as well. Over half of the funds are being identified for street projects. That was expenses. This is the funding source on the revenue side. Clearly, the second column is the largest. That's where the city's funding through bond issues shows up. But we do have a little bit of TIF projects in there. And then notice in the federal column for streets, that $45 million. We continue to get a significant amount of investment into our streets from other sources like the federal government. And I believe that number includes the SDP funding that we receive annually as well. And I believe that number includes the SDP funding that we receive annually as well. These two boxes show you, the first at the top is the GO bonds paid by that $4 tax rate that I mentioned. Again, the street improvements receiving the bulk of that allocation. We try and target 26 million, as you might imagine, don't always land there, but we're keeping it well under 27 million for the next two years. Essentially, that will allow us to maintain the $4 tax rate. The bottom chart shows you the TIF-supported projects and actually identifies individually what those are, since there aren't too many to absorb there. Notice that we have the two garages, parking garages on this list with Fifth and, well, actually, three to come. Fifth and Walnut in fiscal year 15, a little over 3 million, and Locust, the Ninth and Locust garage, needs some significant improvements, 2.2 million. Those are identified as TIF revenues. In addition to the garages, TIF is going to pay for the city match on bridges and the Des Moines River bridges, starting with Grand Avenue Bridge and working our way south. As those costs come to us, we'll be looking to pay for those from TIF funding as well. You see the Grand Avenue Bridge in fiscal year 16 shown there as well.
The Walnut Street renovation, Scott, is, has that, this is the first year for that in there, correct?
This is for actual construction, yes. There's been some design work and preliminary plans already done, but this is associated with the actual.
Construction.
Construction.
Okay.
So how do those look as far as changes from the previous year? This is looking in at that 26 million a year paid by the debt service levy. You had a presentation just a couple of weeks ago on the Emerald Ash Bore. That is by far the largest add that we've put into the CIP, nearly $5 million, just in the next five years. There are additional years and commitments needed for that, for that program beyond just the first five. Municipal Service Center, there's a smaller, relatively small amount of funds set aside for land acquisition if those, that becomes available to us, and some additional planning for Phase Two. Obviously, with the benefit of consolidating the parks into this first phase, we want to continue that momentum and find funding for the Phase Two so we can get public works situated down there as well and gain some operating efficiencies in doing that. Southeast Connector, again, it's a very large project. This is to finish it out to the bypass. This is, there's only a small amount of money at this point to continue the momentum once we finish up the middle section, if you will, that gets us to East 30th. So we don't want to lose that momentum, but there's still a relative, there is a challenge to find the funding to finish that project out, which I believe exceeds $50 million, the funding that we still need to find.
Scott, can you, will we be able to see a list of the projects that have been reduced or delayed?
Yes, yes, that'll be part, part of the capital blue book.
Okay.
That we received. So that's the second handout or document that we'll have for you.
Scott, on that 50 million for the Southeast Connector, is that just for two lanes out to relocated Five?
Correct.
Okay.
And that, that is a very rough estimate. Understand that engineering, there's a lot, a lot of work to be done with levies. My understanding is going over levies and coordination of that is, can be expensive. Just to show you differently how that, those funding sources, looks in a pie graph, provided this, again, nearly half of our own funding is going to streets. The debt service rate going to settle in around $4. It was purposely lowered to the 388 you'll see for next year to allow for one more high year, if you will, for the pension fund costs. That was anticipated, if you remember back, one of the first presentations I gave to you three years ago, was a need to look, to increase that rate, so we were able to lower the debt service rate, keeping the total rate as flat as possible. So as far as the changes that are seen in the TIF-funded CIP, the large differences you're seeing here are the parking garages and the bridges being added to the program moving forward, and then some shuffling in the middle there, middle years. Lastly, another new initiative on the capital side, looking at a development fund where, again, there have been identified capital needs by the city and having someone either on staff or through a contract interacting with citizens and businesses to get private funding for projects, again, that we've identified as a need, as opposed to sometimes the private entities coming to the city and asking for a match for a project that they have identified. Trying to turn that around and say, we have a capital improvement plan, is there any interest in Des Moines citizens and businesses contributing to those initiatives? And so we've, we've got a starting point where, in anticipation, if you will, or expectation that we could receive about $1 million a year in private funding towards these types of projects. This is not meant to be a exclusive list. Any capital items may be presented to the private entities for interest, but we think that these would probably be the better starting points from what we've seen in the past for interest and donations. So it's just a starting point. We really need to just get that ball rolling and see where the interest is in the private So just a couple of slides on the highlights. Again, none of this should be new to you, but we want to make sure that it's out there. We issue about 41 million, excuse me, maybe about 41 million in projects for which we issued 26 million in GO bonds. Flood mitigation continues, although there was a delay due to the Corps of Engineers permit process, but we still have a $20 million CIP item coming from stormwater for flood mitigation programs. Bridges, I mentioned those. The Grand Avenue Bridge, starting with that one and working our way south, a huge investment, but they will be TIF-funded. Also looking in for bridges, an opportunity for a Tiger Grant application, dealing with not only pedestrian bridges, but also foot bridges as well. Medians, there's an add there, 250,000 a year for median repairs and replacements. The Emerald Ash Bore is a topic we've already covered. Tree inventory to replace the additional trees that are being taken down due to the ash bore. We have a item, two items actually, with the police station, two sets of their stairs, which are rather large and concrete, need replacing, and so that is a high-dollar ticket as well.
Scott, the tree inventory.
Yes.
I don't think you said it exactly right. $100,000 of city money, $300,000 of private money, that's for an inventory of trees, it's not the replacement of trees.
I'm sorry. Yes, the second bullet point addresses the replacement with the 50,000. The tree inventory, you're right, is a separate item where we're looking at an inventory.
And that's a matching.
It's a matching.
$100,000 of city funds to match 300,000 of private.
Can I just ask a question about the Tiger Grant? What's the year that we're looking at for that?
This would be submitted this spring.
This spring?
Right.
Okay.
I, we got, yeah. No, I mean, we would submit it this spring, it may, there's, the mayor said to me, he thinks he expects three more rounds of it, so we might submit it this round, it might get funded in the next round after that, but we think getting our foot in the door and getting an application in is the best path forward right now.
Okay.
Application really comes up through us.
Couple other items. Municipal Service Center finishing up Phase One. Again, I've mentioned that we're wanting to pursue Phase Two, so we're looking at some planning funds and land acquisition. The Southeast Connector, some more detail there. Again, there's the $50 million estimated cost that's not currently in the CIP, so that's the challenge to find funding for that last section, Southeast Connector. The parking garage is being paid for through TIF funding. The other one that will need to be addressed is the Seventh and Grand, and so that one is also being pursued for potential, some, at least some amount of private funding for that garage as well. So you'll have items coming to you over the next several months for that project. East Douglas is being added on the long end of the, of the CIP in fiscal years 18, 19, and 20. There are some STP funds that have been assigned to that project. It is a little over $8 million in total cost, so it's just the first funding that's been identified at this point for widening East Douglas. Walnut Street was mentioned. This is for actual construction of that project, looking to be a 50-50 shared cost. And then lastly, the development fund, again, looking for private funding for already identified capital needs that the city has. The rest of these are for your, your reading material. What we've done is broken these down by category of type, so you can look through these at your own leisure. And that sums up the CIP portion. So similar to the budget, we're ready in finance to produce the recommended CIP document for you, so that way you'll have the project sheets that go into full explanation of each project by project. It's a two-inch thick book, but you'll have summaries like this that'll help guide you through it. We're looking at setting aside a little time at the next two workshops. Diane, if you could for the projector. There are two workshops in February. We'll have a little bit of time for any question and answers on either the operating budget or the capital budget, both on the 10th and the 24th. The town hall meeting, I don't want to jump over that, February 6th, that's a Thursday. We would have two town hall meetings at the Downtown Library, both at noon and again at 6:00. Now, the remaining actions dealing with the budget, you'll see on the 24th, the council will need to set the hearing date for the budget to actually be held on March 10. Along with that notice, you will have a published budget that I'll present to you. And you'll notice here, this is what's done every year in the Des Moines Register for all city governments, is a tax rate that will be published. And because this will be published on February 20, probably February 27th, as I've shown here, it will need to show the 41 cent rate increase so that the city council will retain that option on March 10. So on March 10th, you'll know what the results of the franchise referendum are. You have an ability to lower tax rates on March 10. You do not have an ability to raise it above what's published, so you need to reserve the right to increase that 41 cents. That's how it will be published in the newspaper. There's also a pre-levy requirement that will need to be in there in order to start paying on the debt service of bonds we haven't issued yet. That's a normal process as well. So that covers the remaining dates and actions.
Question. Scott, the overview has been excellent. Thank you very much for all of this. And I guess I'm just trying in my mind to figure out, if you look back at the last couple of years, is there any one department that is being impacted more than another with these cuts? I mean, you know, it just happened to be chance of the draw that you eliminated some of the positions, you know, they just happened to be open, so unfortunately, those, based upon the process you go through, the decision's been made that they're not going to be filled. I just want to know in my mind that there's not, you know, whether it's Parks and Rec, Library, whatever, you know, we're very specific about public safety not being impacted, but we really don't make that same statement, and I know you can't make that same statement for the other departments. I just want to make sure that there's not one department that's being impacted more severely than others.
I guess I would refer you back to the slide that talks about the 10 positions.
Right.
That are being eliminated.
If I were to look at those departments, you're telling me that they were impacted?
Yes.
Or, because, just because of those positions?
Yes, I believe so. You may get a different answer from each department head, and those discussions need to be had on, you know, what their operations are looking like the next three, four years.
Scott, let me, let me, let me try. I think, first of all, I want you all to understand that the process we go through on budget preparation is one that involves all of the departments sitting around the table, and we work through this systematically. We try to make sure that the impacts are spread, but clearly, clearly, the impacts are not the same in every department. The Police Department budget is, what, $50 million?
No.
Okay, so when you, when you look at percentage cuts, that department won't come anywhere close to the percentage cuts that you might see in a smaller department. I would say, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but clearly, the Parks Department has been one department that has systematically stepped forward over the last several years and has recommended a lot of things that have reduced expenditures in that, in that particular operation. An example of that, and it's not terribly popular, are the privatization initiatives, which were lawn mowing and custodial work. Those were significant cost reductions, but they reflected in cost reductions within that department. So if you look at percentages or actual number reductions, it isn't the same for all the departments. But we try very hard to make sure that we spread the cuts as much as we can. We've never taken a formulaic approach to it. We've never said every department's going to cut 3%, or whatever the percentage is. We haven't done that, because we've tried to make sure that we allocate the dollars to the things that are frankly, the most critical, at least as I've interpreted from this, from this council. And to be honest, that's always, or almost always, police and fire kind of services. So those, those operations tended to, have tended to take a lot, smaller proportion of the overall cuts. But I would say, without looking at the numbers, that Parks is one department that's probably done more in terms of the actual number, but they've done it, I would suggest to you in a very creative way. So they've been able to maintain levels of operation within there, but they've reduced costs. A lot of that's been through privatization initiatives. And you saw another series of recommendations there on cemeteries, and I could have Ben talk about it. I think he's particularly proud of the changes in cemetery, because we did reduce the gap there. We increased some fees, but I think we also reduced some costs there. So we could do a more definitive analysis, but, but our, our approach to this has been more one of surgery than across-the-board cuts, and that's been very intentional on our part. And the process has been one that's very team-oriented with all the departments being involved.
Thank you.
I know Scott is talking about our budget, and we forecasted 2016. That budget doesn't even start for, you know, 14 months. But if you go to the audit, I thought that was very instructive, you know, on two slides.
Yeah.
Last year, we had a 4.7 increase in property taxes, and the budget expenses, not planned, actual expenses for public safety consumed 4.1, almost 4.2 million of the 4.7 increase. That's where the council has directed, and, and I think we continue to have a strong police and fire department as a result. And, you know, with, you know, with that said, I think we owe, and I think this is what Rick was getting at, a real sense of gratitude for the leadership of those other departments that have found ways to manage and deliver services. The customer, our citizen satisfaction survey shows it. We, we've continued to provide a high level of services when, for instance, actual expenditures in, in recreation and culture have gone down, not over-forecasted budgets or anything, but have real dollars gone down year to year, while public safety has gone up 4.2 million.
Back to Scott, that, that 4.2% increase moving forward is going to be limited. So if we see those kinds of percentage increases in costs, we're not going to be able to cover them like we used to in the past because of the limitation on, on the values of property that is, that the legislature put upon us.
That's correct. Not without a service level impact.
And just, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're exactly correct about that. And I would say, from the perspective of somebody who's not going to be here a year from now, one of the challenges you're going to have is finding ways to diversify revenue. We've talked about this ad infinitum for the last several years, but it's going to require cooperation with the legislature, with the citizens here. I would say at this point, the city's back against the wall in money. We've done everything we can to balance budgets. You've been remarkably resilient at that task. You've had a very good outcome to it. My hat's off to departments like Parks and Libraries and the administrative functions of the city that have found ways to cut, but still deliver services. But you're kind of getting to the end of the rope there with these things, and... But you're kind of getting to the end of the rope there with these things. And we tried very hard to protect the public safety arenas. I think we've done that, but there's some pain there as well. So we've got a challenging time in front of us, and the mayor said it really well. I think if you look at those available revenue streams that you got there, you're kind of getting maxed out there, and the effect of the legislation that was enacted last session is going to take a toll, and that toll will increase in the coming years, unless there's some adjustment to it.
Unless anybody has any other questions, I think the question that I have at this moment is about Project Iowa. It's 9 o'clock. That was scheduled to start at 8:15, and we are generally scheduled to shut this down before now. If everybody's comfortable, we could go ahead and make that presentation if council has time and if everybody else has time.
Maybe they could do the abbreviated version?
No, that's what they have abbreviated.
All right, let's go ahead and ask the Project Iowa, the Workforce Development Initiative of AMIS, to make the presentation now.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I'll turn this over to Julie, just to give you a little background. About three or four years ago, AMIS began doing house meetings, small group conversations in low-income communities in Des Moines to identify pressures around work and job training, and met with hundreds of low-income residents of the city, found a lot of chronically underemployed people, and began to develop an initiative to match those folks up with employers that were in need of employees, and took a fairly high-powered group of folks from Des Moines down to San Antonio to study Project Quest. And out of that process was born Project Iowa. And I'll let Julie Figentu, the Director of Project Iowa, describe the process and how it works.
Thank you. I will make it brief. We have lots of exciting things to share with you, and like I said, we will be two in February, so we're just toddlers, but we're learning a whole lot of really great information. What makes us a little bit different than any other training program is that we work with employers as well as those that are underemployed. So employers are sharing with us what their needs are, and we are developing curriculum based on their needs. We do do a lot to take people in in our screening process, because we want to make sure people are really ready to commit to training for a career. Some of the prequalifications that we ask for for this is, we do the, if they qualify for any other funding, because we're privately funded, as well as we have some state and federal dollars that come to us, but we do drug testing, criminal background checks, and we look for other funding sources that come in. We also do a lot of screening around assessments. But the main component that employers tell us is the most important is our VIP program, and that's what is another strategy that makes us very different from other training programs. And VIP stands for Vision, Initiative, and Perseverance. And it's really where we work on the employability skills that a lot of employers report are missing from the workforce. That goes with showing up, being there on time, knowing what the environment of workforce is, you know, how to dress appropriately, how to talk. We do a lot of work around emotional intelligence in this. We go through and we try to ascertain what barriers have been in place before. Why is a 38-year-old person coming to Project Iowa? Why have they not gotten to where they wanted to be with their career? So we really do a lot of work upfront about addressing all barriers that may exist for this person, so that when they go into training, they're successful. What we see is they've been to a lot of different places, been told that they're going to get training, and that will lead to a career, and what they find is another job that's paying minimum wage or below, and they're still unable to care for their families and to provide for them. We do use DMAC for all of our technical training right now and Mercy College. We were targeted at two sectors, advanced manufacturing and healthcare. We've made the decision recently to move out of healthcare because of the wages. All of our programs are short-term certifications, 12 to 16 weeks of training. Those 12 to 16 weeks are four nights a week. They have to commit to us typically from 6:00 to 10:00. And so typically, they have jobs during the day, and we ask them to commit and come to us in the evening. Our average wage right now is $13.66 that we're placing people in, but if you study some of the reports out there for the Iowa Policy Project, a livable wage for a single mom with two children is $19. So we still need to push that up a little bit to make sure that people can take care of themselves and their families. But we have a lot of community involvement. AMIS being part of our founding, we feel like we have community support behind these people. We have lots of communication between the faculty, employers, and the, this didn't get taken out, the MacGyver thinks, our presentation, he said, I hope you took that out. But what we're really doing is offering opportunity. We don't, Project Iowa doesn't say we're going to go in and fix people so that they can be out there and have a career. What we know is that everyone has what they need inside of them, it's just bringing those things to light. But we do a lot of work about practical intelligence, and just knowing that, how to act in certain situations and to be successful. The industry involvement as well. We get feedback, I didn't do, I had help on all these, Darren, who is our technical trainer, is a big Iowa State fan. And our industry involvement is, once we place people into a company, we stay involved with that participant for up to a year. But we get their feedback if we're providing well-qualified and suitable employees as well, so they stay involved. And it's just not about completing, it's about the whole process that we use in Project Iowa. Like I said, it can be up to 16 weeks of training, but typically, we're with them for six months to a year, a year and a half. So it's about, it's all very relational, as AMIS is. We really believe that people just need the opportunity and need to learn how to use what they have, their skills and talents, in order to get to where they want to go. We do have relationships with many employers in the area. Their commitment to us, they understand our process, they believe in what we're doing, they're looking for a talented and gifted workforce, we're helping to provide that. So by signing on to be an employer partner, these employers are saying, we'll take a look at Project Iowa participants, so we can typically guarantee them an interview, not a job, because they have to have the qualifications that those companies need in order to be successful. But we have great partners that help with the curriculum, and when I spoke about it being very relational, most of our instructors come from industry. So they're in the classroom, actually doing the training. It becomes a person that may have had some barriers in the past, whether it be a criminal history, whether it be job hopping from one job to another, but they become people. They get to see, the employers in the classroom get to then see them as talented and gifted individuals. So our retention, so some of the strategies, once again, just to reiterate, is our upfront work with employers. We screen for success. Project Iowa never tells anyone no. We may say, not now. We may say, you know, let's take care of your housing need first, or let's take care of your transportation if that becomes an issue, let's get that, I'll take care of. The VIP class is really the transformational piece of it. We do work with the curriculum instructors, and so if they're seeing in the classroom there's some tension, or there's some people that aren't working well as a team, or there's some arrogance, or there's some underconfidence, they'll share that with us, and then we bring that to VIP and work on those skills in the classroom setting. And then our outcomes are not about training. Our outcomes are about placement and retention. So we hold ourselves accountable to getting people careers and them being there. We currently will have a graduation tomorrow night that I'd like to invite you all to. This will be our third graduation. We'll have 36 graduates, and it's a very, very exciting time. You'll be able to see that the changes in them that have occurred have been over multiple areas of their life. It's just not about a career. Currently, this is not as up-to-date, and I can get you more up-to-date information, but we have six employees that have been at their companies for over a year now. So we'll be two in February, so they got placed out of those first classes and have been employed. We've seen increases, they've started around $1,476 for the welders. We have people now making $20 to $22 an hour. So we're seeing really, really great things happen with this, and we believe that there's still a lot of work to be done. Our funding comes from multiple places. We're private and public funds. And as I said, really, it's the screening, the VIP, the relationships with the employers. And one of the other things we have discovered, because Vermeer was one of our first employers to sign on, who's outside of the city, but what we've seen is, if we train, and most of our training has been done here in Des Moines to date, it's very important that we place people in companies that are close, because it makes a big difference. A 40-minute drive for someone, just trying to move out of poverty is a very significant barrier. So we really have started to recruit from the general area. So here in Des Moines, where we're recruiting for classes here, we're looking to do placement at places like Bridgestone, EFCO, Quality Manufacturing, those places that are here and located within like a 20-mile radius. And I did bring, and because I just think it's very important about our relationship with businesses, Scott, if you want to say something?
Oh, sure.
With Bridgestone, he's been one of our partners that has worked with our participants, and he can maybe shed a little bit of light of why this is a good partnership.
Yeah, sure. I'm going to back, if I could, I just want to back a slide up, and I want to make a point of emphasis. So for us, what has been amazing, I've been doing some workforce things with Central Iowa Works and Project Iowa for, I don't know, two and a half years. And what's been amazing to me is, as I get into the information, all the employers say the same thing. I have open jobs, but I can't find quality workers to fill those jobs. They don't have the skills. Or the number-one reason people no longer work for us is they don't show up. So I think back, man, I can't imagine getting a job for $16, $20, $30 an hour and then not showing up and losing that job. I just can't envision that, but it's true, it's out there. And it's not because, it's providing those skills and those vision, initiative, perseverance skills to play well with others and communicate and show up to work is really what's critical. So we have five, six people now at Bridgestone who've gone through Project Iowa. And for me, what's amazing about this is our placement rate. So 83% of the graduates get full-time employment, making a livable wage, and they're going from a minimum wage job to doubling their salary, or from zero work to that $15, $16, $20 an hour job. That's what's amazing. The other piece that's amazing is the transformation these men and women make. I'll never forget the story at one of the graduations, and one of the guys said, this is the one that will probably stick with me forever, is, he said, "I used to think, when I needed to make money, I would do something, and that would be anything, including doing something criminally, and I no longer think like that." And to see the transformation this young man made from however, whatever he had in his background to, I'm no longer going to be like that, and I personally own that, is amazing, because then they're going to be our, right, they're going to pay taxes, they're going to be the people who do the right things, they're going to be a good role model for their kids. That's what's amazing to see this, versus just go get a certificate, you now have the magical technical skills and maybe hold that job or that temporary job where you move from place to place to place. That's what's so powerful about this, both from us for, you know, hiring folks for Bridgestone, but also all of those employer partners is just amazing. So if you have a chance to go to the graduation tomorrow, just to see that and see the stories that these folks tell is just, is really amazing. So I do appreciate your time and letting us stay over and do the abbreviation version. Thank you.
Quick question. What is your total operating budget? How many FTEs?
I'm the only FTE, so we're very small. We have the privilege of working with University of Iowa graduate students, so that's the other part that's helping us get this done. Our operating cost, so you just have the one full-time employee, which is me, but most of our costs come into the training, and we do try to find funding around that. We've been operating on about, I think last year it was $250,000. So, but with hopes to grow and to expand, because what we're doing, we're seeing great results with, as Scott mentioned, 83% placement rate. So we're really looking at systematic change, how to get these individuals into skill training, because there are lots of opportunities out there. There are community colleges, there are different areas that they could go to, but for some reason, we have this large population that isn't getting their needs met by the traditional means. So we're really trying to work on how we get everyone into a career so they can support their family and contribute to what we're doing.
I want to thank you very much for coming down and making this presentation to us, because there's a lot of people out there that really could use your kind of support, so thank you very, very much.
And tomorrow night, we're at DMAC at 6:00 PM, in Building 6 is where our graduation will be, so you're all invited. We'd love to have you there.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Any quick public comment anybody wants to make? Step up, sir.
Good morning. Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur. Three things that I had general questions about in regard to the budget. Number one, the public hearing, which is going to be held in February, was it 6th, if I remember right?
Correct.
February 6th. Will there be a detailed budget available by that time for the citizens to look at?
Scott.
Scott.
More detail than we have in today's presentation, but we won't have the full books.
Then a question is, is why do we have a public hearing when we don't have a budget to have, to talk about it?
If I could, and Scott, you may want to add to this comment as well. I think the presentation material today was intended to provide counsel and the public with an overview. Marty, it's not, it is not the detailed document, no question about that, but there was a lot of information in the material that was presented today, and it gives you a pretty good idea of what the major policy changes are in the budget. I wish we had the whole document, exactly what you're saying, but the data today was very helpful, I think, in getting people to understand what the basic elements of it are.
So then, if the public has general questions in regard to the specifics of the budget, they're going to have to wait until the budget approaches City Council and not during the public hearing, or?
They ought to ask at that meeting, and then we can see if we can't get them information in any specific area, I would think. I think we would all like to have a fully fleshed-out budget to look at, but giving all the, given all the variables that we have up till the 4th, you know, we're looking at some pretty interesting, different scenarios that we would have to carry out in our budget and then look at how we move forward from there. But I think what we're looking for here is priorities in different areas, and I, we, I want, and I don't know about you, but I want to know how the public feels about those priority areas. And if they want fleshed-out detail on that, why, we'll see if we can't get it.
Well, I think certainly the public's going to be most interested in how it flushes out in the areas of public safety, and how, where you're going to put priorities and material. I use one illustration, is that there have been people on the northeast side of Des Moines, and also the southeast side of Des Moines, very concerned for a number of years about a new location for fire stations. And yet, unless we see a detailed flush out of the budget over the next two years, we don't know if there's any funding sources for that, or whether or not there's even priority given to that area of public safety. So those are the kinds of issues. You don't know priorities until you actually see the budget, and you see which ones are being funded. That establishes priorities.
Okay, so you see that the priorities, as they have been presented to you, that there's, we're going to see maintained and somewhat increased funding in both of those areas, police and fire. So if what you're talking about is So if what you're talking about is specific locations for specific services, is that what you're asking?
That would be one priority of that public safety.
So maybe we can get some of that kind of information at least for you, if that is really what you're looking for, Marty.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any other areas, we have specific ideas that maybe you could ask, that you feel that you're getting some feedback?
I can sure give you some, I won't waste the time.
Why don't you do that?
Yeah. And then secondly, will the budget ultimately be online for people to look at instead of having to grab a?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Second issue came under the CIP portion of the thing, and it was a bullet point about the fact that preference will be given to those projects which have grant slash private funding. And that generates a little bit of concern on my part. When you actually tie that, you then are saying that those areas of the city, which are economically a little bit more advanced than other parts of the city, if they are able to put projects together that then will leverage city dollars, they will have priority given for those particular projects and the parts of the city who cannot leverage that kind of thing because they don't have the economic wherewithal, they'll be put on a lower scale. And so I'd like to have a little bit more information about just what you mean by preferences given to public and private, the private and grant-type dollars. So you'll say, one section of the city says, you know, hey, I can get you, we can put together $5,000 if you'll match it toward a particular park or a particular project, and other portions of the city says, there's no way I can come up or we can come up with $5,000 to do it. Does that mean that those portions of the city will have higher priority in city dollars?
Well, I think that what we're trying to do is get some additional participation from the private sector in areas where they can afford to do that, not overlooking some of the needs in some of the other areas. I'd like City Manager quickly to maybe give you a little more fleshed-out version, but I understand what you're saying. We're not going to turn our backs on areas of the city. Actually, generally, I think what you're referring to is generally residential areas
Yes.
that need to have certain support that they otherwise, you know, can't fund. So, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Marty, the ability of a neighborhood to generate private money cannot be the basis upon which the council makes decisions about different projects around the city. And to cite an example where the council has dealt with that, I think effectively, in our Streetscape program. We have some areas, example, Ingersoll Neighborhood, where the neighborhood really had the capacity to raise more private money. They did so. There is a private match there that is greater than frankly, a corridor like Sixth Avenue. So the council has been able to make sure that the ability to pay, the ability to contribute money to a project, isn't the litmus test that judges whether or not the city invests its own dollars. On the other hand, it is a way, private donations, to expand what the city can do with its own dollars. That's the intention. The intention is not to frankly discriminate some areas of the city that can't afford to pay for projects. That would be really unfortunate if it went that way. That's not the council's intention.
I appreciate that clarity because sometimes when you look at bullet points that it lends itself to questions going, well, wait a minute. And that's particularly true when we're hard up with money as a city. I mean, you know, we're going to look for people that are willing to invest as well, but that investment should be balanced as much as possible, I think.
Absolutely.
And then the final question, again, observation is, in the first, the operating budget, there was an area dealing with Tomorrow Plan and Capitol Crossroads implementation. I really think it's important that, as far as I know, the City Council has not actually voted on either one of those plans as part of the process, and I'm wondering why we're implementing something that's actually not been voted on by the City Council and yet putting city money towards those projects, which at the best right now are still moving targets, they have not been finalized. I think it's very important that those two plans come to the City Council and have a public hearing, and then have public support and a vote before we start actually implementing projects towards plans that we've not approved. Okay? Thank you.
Any other comment? All right. We will adjourn this meeting and reconvene this evening at 4:30. Thank you.
Thank you.[1757.11]